Call the meeting to order for the June fourteenth Parks and Recreation Commission. Please call roll call. Jenny?
Thanks.
Toby, you want to do the pledge?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. I got deer in headlights. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Present.
James Hennessy.
Present.
Michael Kelly. Toby Lewis.
Present.
William Nowak. Renee Powell.
Present.
Miguel Prano. Mitchell Marks. Braden McNaul.
Present.
Erica Evans.
Here.
Beth Estman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for approval of minutes from previous meeting as our motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been approved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here for public input? Is there anyone here for public input? Is there anyone here for public input? Seeing none, moving on. Report of Council Liaison, Eric Evans.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that the strategic plan is in draft format, was presented to the council at the last meeting. It is going to be going up on the website, but I'm hoping that there's some information in here that will be useful to the commission, especially thinking about the master plan and some of the work with the potential facilities. Just wanted to note that the priorities that came out of the survey that was done and the focus groups was quality of life of residents, which is bringing together people through infrastructure enhancements and lifestyle opportunities, which would very much touch on what the Park and Rec does. Growth management, manage growth in the sustainable manner that enhances the quality of life for all residents. Inclusivity, build an informed, connected, and engaged community that embraces diversity and provides for economic prosperity and affordability for all residents. And education, continue to advance excellence in the school system through infrastructure, personnel, operational investments as needed. So there, the committee, two members came and presented at the last meeting, so there's a lot of information that was provided at that point, and I know there's going to be more discussion and information coming forward through the strategic plan as well. So I just encourage the commission, as you guys continue your work looking at those pieces, to go through this and find some pieces that will help support what you want to work on. The other item I wanted to mention is that the Honoring Parks and Rec Commission Month is going to be July. Our clerk of council is working on a proclamation, and that will be at the July third meeting. So I'd like to invite all the commissioners to attend. I'll try to get more information about exactly when it will fall in our meeting. It may be at the beginning, it may be an agenda item, but if you all can mark your calendar for July third, so you can join us for the, just the celebration of the Park and Rec Commission Month. And I'm hoping, I know I had talked to Molly, that maybe, maybe we can put in an application for a flag that we could apply for July as well. Anyone have any questions?
Jane?
Well, the question on the strategic plan, is that the one that's being put together by the, you said the Planning and Zoning Commission, are they the ones running point? Or, why I'm asking is if the Park and Rec Commission or members wanted to reach out to somebody to get involved, how would they do that?
So this is a committee that was formed through the council. It is separate from the Plan of Conservation and Development that is being worked on by Planning and Zoning. There were two surveys that were done. I believe the Plan of Conservation Development Survey is still ongoing. But the survey for the strategic plan is completed. This is the report that they came up with, there's a lot of, I have the hard copy if anyone wanted to review this one, but it is going to be on our town website. And as far as getting involved, I think there's, it's a group that is very community-based. So we have a lot of people with experience that were on it, or are still on it, like Janice Snyder is the chairwoman, Tierney Cabot, we have a couple students, so Tierney Cabot and Abigail Blanchford are students. We also have other residents like Mindy Lewis, Miguel Prano. So you have a member of your commission as well. William Myers, who is a former music teacher in the town, Philip Richards, Karen Wagner, the town manager, counselor Kozakowski, Lindsay Ruscheck, Michelle Leip, our director of planning, and Stephen King as well. So it's kind of a mixture of elected officials, as well as community representatives, and kind of just came together to really find what the town wants in planning for the future. What is the long-term plan for South Windsor? And I know that the commission wants to look at what is the Park and Rec's long-term plan, five-year plan, master plan, going forward as far as facilities and everything. So there probably is some crossover and some tie-ins in here that you can kind of pull from.
Erica, do they have the data as to how many people participated and what the demographic is?
So I'm not going to remember the number off the top of my head.
That's what I recall, was about twenty-six hundred.
Ten percent.
It actually says it right here.
It's a lot better than we've ever done before.
Absolutely.
Which was well above what they expected.
I believe the one previous.
Five, four to five hundred responses.
Four to five hundred, yeah.
Yeah. I think when I was looking at the website at the previous one that was done, I believe they had about eight hundred responses, so this is much better.
I remember when I came on here, we had one of like three hundred respondents, like how can we make decisions based on that small?
For sure. Yeah, a lot of effort was put in to reaching out to people. Probably everyone here received a postcard in your mailbox with access to the survey as well. I know it was posted on the website, on social media, you know, across many spectrums to try to reach as many people as possible. They also had small groups come in and kind of had, you know, focus groups and discussion groups, they called it something else, to kind of gauge what those groups were interested in the meeting as well. So there was a lot of effort by this committee to really access all aspects of the community.
And then if I can just take a second, because I was going through the survey and everything, and I pulled out a couple of points that I thought were interesting, and the way that they asked the questions, like I thought was interesting, it was kind of, it was very simplified in, do you think in this area, does our town, do, do you want them to do the same amount of effort, do you want them to put in less effort or more effort? I think that's like a very like easy way of kind of gauging attitudes and trends and whatnot. So the three points that I pulled out was for family programming, sixty-four percent said stay the same, thirty-four percent said do more. For Parks and Rec, fifty-eight percent said stay the same, thirty-eight percent said do more. And for entertainment and leisure, fifty-seven percent said stay the same, thirty-five percent said do more. What is notable however is stay the same is not what, they're not thinking of what we're currently doing in the space that we're in, so.
This is the previous survey though?
This is what was on the strategic, on the website, what was posted on the website.
I think.
Was that the previous?
I think that's the two thousand nineteen, I want to say, I'm pretty sure.
I'll double check, because then I'm curious to see what the differences are, because yeah, I was trying to find.
I mean even in here, for quality of life of residents, objective A is provide recreational opportunities that survive, support active lifestyles for all residents, and it kind of goes through an action plan. So like that one especially might be of interest to the commission, which I'm sure Molly's already looked at this.
Are there any other questions for Erica? Anything you want Erica to take back to the town council? Thank you, Erica. Board of Education, Beth?
Thank you. I think what all the chatter about this week is the last day of school, which is tomorrow for students. Also graduation tomorrow at Dunkin' Donuts Park at four PM. Last day of school for teachers will be Monday, giving them two days to pack up classrooms for all of those who are transitioning to new spaces. The highlight in the last, since the last meeting was that our budget was approved by the town council unanimously, so that was exciting. And then we're continuing to get a lot of communications from families just about the fourth R and expanding that program. And I guess it would be helpful for us to have some data to give back to them, so I don't know if it's possible to sort of summarize, you know, how many seats were at each school at the end of the school year now, and then how many are available next year, just so there's something tangible that people can see that yes, it is expanding and here's the additional seats. I think that would be helpful for people, and that's about it.
Any questions, Beth? Thanks, Beth.
Thanks.
Special reports. Beth. I'm reporting, moving on. George is not here, so I guess we'll move right through the, unless anyone has any information on the Open Space Task Force? Okay. It's all you.
All right, good evening.
Madam Director.
So I have a pretty lengthy report this time around, so bear with me in terms of the information. So to start out, Walk and Wheelways, they have been doing a lot of work, kind of expanding their opportunities. So they continued to do the fourth grade bike program. As we've discussed recently, we need to actively recruit more members to continue the fourth grade bike program, because a lot of our members, you know, they are very active in Walk and Wheelways currently, but they want to have a succession plan for when there's less members to be active. It is a group of mainly retirees, and they're hoping to get some younger folks in that'll be able to carry on the bike program in the future years. So if anyone knows any individuals that are interested in volunteering for the fourth grade bike program, please reach out to our office and we'd connect them with Walk and Wheelways. We also have been working with the group of teenagers who wanted to start the cycle club, because we couldn't do it through the high school, and we were able to do their first ride, I think it was twenty-eight miles that they did that day. It was really neat, they had a really good experience. It was rained out, so we had a lot less participants than we anticipated, so we had six for the first ride instead of like the fourteen that were anticipated. However, they are planning on doing one again next week, and they're hoping to have like the fourteen or fifteen or so youth participate in that. And they're doing like a sixteen mile ride this time, so not quite as long, but it is a really nice new opportunity that we're doing to engage our teen age group in being active in the community. Again, they are looking for volunteers for the fifth, fourth grade bike program, the teen cycle club, or to even just be actively engaged in that commission. So if anyone is interested, please reach out. In terms of fourth R, so we did present at the town council meeting this past, or last Monday, to discuss that we did expand the program, we got rid of the waitlist, there is no waitlist at this time, and we do have a few vacancies that I'd be happy to put together to provide to the schools. We had a mass emailing in terms of childcare and our availability and that we were expanding the program, but we also have secured some other high-quality childcare programs that we will be running next school year if we have the interest. So we're hoping that when any, anyone comes into our office asking for additional options, we're able to provide them those as well if fourth R does end up hitting capacity again. But at this time, we are not having any waitlist, so we're actively, you know, chatting with parents and taking individuals in for the program. As I alluded to during the town council meeting, this program, there's a lot that comes into it. A lot of people just assume that an after-school program is they play games in the gym, or they do arts and crafts and homework, and it's just counselors watching the kids, but we take a special approach. We have nurses and one-on-ones as well for individuals that need extra assistance. So our after-school program is very rare in that sense. I've never worked for an organization that has that in all of our programs, and we do pride ourselves in that inclusivity piece. So we do have a lot more staff that go into play, as well as a lot more intricate planning that goes into it, because we have to ensure that we have the best quality care for all the kids. So we're actively recruiting for fourth R for next school year, for regular counselor positions, for one-on-ones, for nurses. And a huge priority that we were discussing for the upcoming school year is to get additional training to deal with the difficult behaviors that we're seeing an increase in. So that way, again, because we pride ourselves in making sure that we understand every individual that comes through, they're not just a number, they're not just a name, we actually really build that rapport. So we want to be able to be successful with them and make sure it's a safe and fun place for them to go. So we're really focusing on that portion of training for the upcoming school year. However, school is done tomorrow, which is great, right? Because now we have them for summer camp and all of our summer programs, and only give our fourth R staff that are not working our summer programs a nice little like recharge and reset. Because we had, we had a really nice long school year, so they're looking forward to recharging, and, you know, they're excited to head back in for next year. But to wrap up the school year, we had a really awesome fourth R family night on June first, which happened to be like ninety-two degrees. Super awesome to see over three hundred and seventy-five people attend the event. It was packed, it was a nice kickoff for VMP as well, because it gave our staff a nice practice run for the pool operations. So thank you for all those families that attended that. Preschool also just wrapped up as well, so we are done preschool officially in whopping. We finished this week, we had a full session, you know, they had a lot of fun playing outside, experimenting with watercolors, playing with Play-Doh, doing some science activities. We ended the year with, you know, a nice little graduation step up, and then we also had a end-of-the-year pool party for them on Friday, June second. They had a great time in the kiddie pool, hanging out, it was also beautiful weather. We're looking forward to seeing everyone in the fall in our new location for the preschool. And then, let's see, we got badminton, we had forty-five youth and adult participants this month for open play and lessons. So we're running these programs until August, and we're exploring, offering one day a week for open play through November. We honestly have limited gym space, so that's our largest concern, right? We have limited gym space, especially once basketball starts, and we're trying to accommodate all the different user groups, because we do have a wide variety of sports and different interests. And this group in particular came in to speak on how they want an extended play, so we're able to hopefully accommodate through November. But once November hits, all the way up until March, April, they're not going to have playing space, because we do not have the availability in our schedule. So we are figuring out how to accommodate it a few months longer than normal, but it is not possible to do year-round. We can't give any sport group a year-round place. And that's just again due to the limited gym space. But we are trying to actively accommodate all the different groups that are coming into our building. So that will be a continued challenge that we will be facing. In terms of other athletics, so softball league is off to a great start. We have twelve teams this season, it's a very competitive league. We have new LED lights on our field, which has been a welcome addition for night games. We've gotten a lot of feedback on that. The players are excited to be able to play under those lights. We've had some rain delays on the last couple Thursdays, so that's their only complaint for the season so far, which is nice to hear. In terms of pickleball, we have lessons and leagues going on. Our lessons, we've been offering them all spring and now into the summer to teach individuals the sport, so that way they can join our league, or they can go out and go play on their own. This session we had sixteen participants, and we plan to offer more this fall for both youth and adults, because we've had some youth interests as well. And our league, we started on Tuesday, May twenty-third, and it's going to run through July. We have forty-eight participants across our A and B division, which is maxed out. We can't really expand it past that, but we're really excited to have that league, and we're hoping to run a tournament in the fall. We're just working out that piece, and we're hoping from that fall tournament, then we'll be able to build up our league again next spring. And then for cornhole, we had a second season of cornhole, we started that on Thursday, June first. We had eleven teams participating this season, I was able to go to the kickoff, and it was awesome to see the spirits. Very competitive, they had matching T-shirts, their own bags, on top of like we had our regulation bags, and they brought their own. So it's a very competitive but fun league. We do still have some availability in the cornhole league, so if anyone's interested in joining, it's awesome, it's on Thursday nights, it's a really relaxed environment, and it's over at Nevers Park. In terms of other summer things going on, we have quite a bit, so again, bear with me. So VMP, we just opened on Saturday, June first, for the preseason. We decided after reading surveys from last season and also from talking to various community members, to delay our opening from Memorial Weekend until that June first, but then we decided to keep it open until September fourth. So we were able to keep it open later on in the season, just because individuals wanted to be able to still enjoy it when it was still warmer out, and traditionally, we have not seen a large attendance up until June. So we made that decision, we're going to monitor it and see how it goes this upcoming year. But overall, the staff were super excited. We had training at the end of May, they were kind of able to prepare for the seasonal positions, and they kind of worked through a variety of team building exercises, they went through safety protocols, we did a bunch of in-service trainings, and they were just really, really happy to be back there for the summer. The energy is high, and I know we have a lot of fun events planned there for the summer as well. So if you have the opportunity to go out to VMP, it looks awesome, and it's ready to go. Other things, thank you for those who attended the farmer's market, we had our kickoff on Saturday, June third. We have over thirty-five vendors, variety of entertainment lined up, and it's going to be now every Saturday from nine to twelve through October seventh. And, ew, you know, it's been a growing market over the last two years, we've seen a steady increase in the vendors and the attendance, so it's a program that we really love running. So we also have a Meet Me at the Park, which is an initiative that we started back in that weird snow day that was like on the verge of like April, I want to believe. So we started that, we did a random pop-up doing hot chocolate near Porter's Hill, it was like the one and only snow day that we had. And this initiative we decided to create was a way to bring community members together in a healthy and productive way, but also connect the gap between Parks and Rec and maybe some other town entities, because we're offering outreach programs together. Sean, our special events staff has really been heading this opportunity up. They did a second one on May twenty-third in Nevers Park, and it had volleyball and cornhole and horseshoes. We're going to be doing another one in conjunction with any commission members that'd like to attend at the Boundless Playground on June twenty-first at one PM. And Dairy Queen is partnering with us, and they are going to be handing out ice creams. So we're excited for that. I'm sure a lot of people will attend with Dairy Queen. It's going to be kind of a kickoff to summer, and we're going to be posting more Meet Me at the Park opportunities with, again, various town entities such as the police department, fire department, and we're really going to be bridging that gap and doing more outreach in the community. And so updates within the facility, so as we all know, since school is out, summer camp starts. So we have been actively working since the end of April to set up our facility, make sure it's all set for all of the programs that are going to be coming in, and also to make sure the space is functioning. You know, we've done a lot of deep cleaning, painting of rooms, they repainted the gym floor lines, we moved around camp equipment, we've been setting it up, we had to update some pieces in the bathroom, some building signage, we just did air conditioning, so we're doing stuff all over the place, just to make sure that we are all set for the start of summer camp. Right now, currently, they're working on a project as well, which I'm sure John will talk a little bit more about, to update the playground space for our youngest individuals for little explorers slash preschool. So we have pre-camp coming in on June nineteenth, which is only going to be like forty or fifty kids, but then the following week it's full-blown camp, four hundred-plus kids. Yes, Jimmy?
Yeah, with summer camp coming up, I'm wondering if you faced any challenges getting the building up to speed for all the campers that are coming in in a couple weeks?
Yes.
Yes, so.
Okay, could you talk, could you talk about that?
Yeah, of course.
We'd like to hear about that.
Yeah, of course. So naturally, it is an older building, so we are experiencing issues in terms of making sure that the space is going to function for the three hundred-plus kids in terms of ADA, bathrooms, door, just, there's a lot. There's the bathrooms, the doors, the setup of the facility, the parking, there's been a lot of hurdles that we've had to overcome. We've put our heads together, we've really worked in conjunction, Parks has been doing a lot, and we've been just doing a lot of problem solving and constantly calling other departments to assist us, and hey, you know, the bathrooms aren't working, we need this fixed, or, you know, the cleaning company isn't coming out on the right schedule, how can we, you know, navigate this, because we have all these kids coming in?
I mean, how many bathrooms did you have out today?
Four.
Okay.
Yeah.
Out of how many?
We have eight bathrooms.
So you had fifty percent out, and how many campers are coming in two weeks?
Three hundred-something, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so, and again, so these are the hurdles and the headaches that we are navigating right now, and that's the reality, because we want to put our best foot forward to make sure that this space is ready to go. And I do give props to my team for what they are able to do, and for our town departments what they're able to do. However, we do have a reality of. However, we do have a reality of we're going to have some headaches this summer. We are going to be constantly calling about plumbing, probably. We are probably going to be constantly calling about, you know, a door not working or, you know, a headache because there's traffic. Or, there's things that are going to happen. You know, we have all the plans in place. We have all, everything that we can do in our control. Because, again, we're not going to put someone in a position that they, you know, aren't going to be safe or successful or healthy in our building. So, that's my first priority, but it will definitely be a challenge throughout the summer.
Because we haven't had, my understanding is we haven't had really complete opening to the public because we haven't been running most of our programming out of the new facility. So, when the camps come, that's going to be the first opportunity. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. So, we just started offering Jakito two weeks ago in the building. And that's really it right now besides trainings because we want to make sure that everything is set up. So, camp is really the first big group. And then, we also have some contracted camps that'll also be occurring in the building at the same time. So, it will be a challenge. But, again, I do want to note to, that we will make sure that it is successful and we will use all the tools and resources that we have to do that. And we're hopeful that we can navigate through all those hurdles.
Molly, as well as the indoor space, what about the outdoor space? And how are you, how are you guys developing that as far as, you know, with the Wapping School, there was, you know, more of a contained area with the playgrounds and everything like that. Are you going to use the area in the Old Orchard Hill or are you going to utilize anything at all in the new, in the new school?
Yeah, so we are going to be using that full outside space out back. Parks is doing a good job at making a new play space for our youngest campers that is fenced in completely, which will then run into preschool as well. So, that way, we have a small contained space for them. We're going to be trying to make, you know, the small improvements that we can to the playground space overall out back. It is fairly contained, but we're also going to be using that field space on that side as well. The purpose of camp is always to get kids outside, to be active, be healthy, and we're really going to push that. Just use the outside space as much as we can because we do have some nice green space and we really want to capitalize on that piece.
I think we should take the negatives that are there, like the bathrooms, the plumbing, the doors, and flip that as to why we need a facility, a new facility. And that would allow us a chance to publicize it.
Yeah, and that's, and that's a fair statement. And I think, again, there is no health and safety issue. Obviously, the building is not, we wouldn't allow people in the building if it came down to that. But, again, there is significant challenges and hurdles that my staff are having to overcome that we didn't have to overcome necessarily in Wapping, and that is a reality. And, you know, my staff are very positive, but it is extra headaches that are added on to their list.
And I know you guys need to do a great job. You'll have everything running. But, in what I think is clear is that there's a significant cost that comes into putting the Band-Aids that you guys have to put on there. So, that, I think you speak to that a little bit as well.
Yeah, I mean, so, we just had seventy thousand that was moved for the improvements. And that's, yeah, it's been depleted essentially. And that's, and you wouldn't even be able to tell, right? Again, they've done a great job, but most of that was in-house, like the moving of the stuff was in-house, the painting, all that kind of stuff. So, the funding that we did use, it was for like air conditioning and for some IT infrastructure, for the ADA entrances and a few of like the small cosmetic things. So, it's crazy to think about how much money is going to have to go into actually repairing bigger things in the building. And I think that it's going to come up as more of a reality when people see that.
Molly, who's the camp director for the summer, this year, for the season?
Yeah, so we have four camp directors. So, we have, and they're all returning, so we have Lauren, Alex, Marissa, and Abby. So, they are all returning seasonal camp directors.
Any other questions for Molly?
I have a few more things on my. So, going on with camp, though, we do have a full summer. We have it pretty much all planned out, which is awesome. Everyone's extremely excited to welcome the kids. We have some awesome trips planned, activities. The staff were really high-energy, jumping around, singing the songs, preparing. And they've been setting up the camp space over the last couple of weeks. And because we had a waitlist in our programs, we looked to see what we could do. And we decided that we were able to, with our staffing and because we had all returning directors as well, we reintroduced Camp Trailblazer. So, in the past, it was for five-to-nine-year-olds, but for this summer, due to reassessment of the needs of our community, we opened it up to camp to accommodate ten and eleven-year-olds as well. So, we're going to be offering Trailblazer for that waitlist that we have every week. That will be all the way from five to eleven, so that'll be the overflow. We have started calling individuals on the waitlist. The front office has been inundated with the calls and the emails, but they've been doing a really good job at working through the like hundred-and-seventy-five people on a waitlist, for example, and just calling and offering spaces. We actually haven't filled up, so this is another reason why I'm mentioning this because we haven't filled up that yet. We would like to get our numbers back up in Trailblazer because we do have the waitlist. We hope that people join. And maybe if you didn't join the waitlist yet, you hear about it. So, we're going to be sending out an email blast as well tomorrow to our whole database. We're going to be posting online and saying, you know, we have spaces available for summer camp if you'd like to join us. But, we are really excited that we're able to accommodate that with the level of staffing that we do have. And then, in terms of our facility as well, as of June 5th, we did change our operating hours of the facility. So, on Wednesdays, we remain open until 7:00 PM, which is going to allow those who are not able to get to our office before 4:30 to now come in and, you know, do any administrative things that they need with our front office. And then, we will be closing early on Fridays. However, because the front office closes does not mean that any of our programs close. So, and as we all know, I mean, we're running nights, weekends, everything. So, even though our front office is closed, our staff will oversee any programs, rentals, they're still working. So, it's just our administrative hours are shifting a little bit in the front office end. But, our hope is that Wednesdays, we'll be able to see more customers that are working until four, like 4:30, 5 o'clock. And we actually, the last couple of weeks have, we've gotten actually a decent amount of individuals coming into the office. So, it's nice to see that that change really did impact us in a positive manner. And then, lastly, I was speaking with Shauna, again, who does all of our events. And we wanted to remind everyone of some of the upcoming special events in the department. So, as I noted a little bit ago, we have the meet-me-at-the-park on June 21st at the Nevers Park Playground, starting at 1:00. Concerts start on June 29th, so that's Thursday. And we're going to have that every Thursday through August 17th at Evergreen Walk at our normal spot, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. We got the Free Friday Flix starting this upcoming Friday, well, yeah, next upcoming Friday, so like June 23rd. So, we have the June 23rd, July 14th, and August 4th. So, we have three movie nights this summer. But, then, we have a dive-in movie on July 19th at VMP. So, we will be showing Pirates of the Caribbean at 8:00 PM at VMP. It'll be the first time we've done it, so we're really excited for it. And we do have a South Windsor Celebrate Veterans Pool Party on July 23rd. So, we're going to be doing some various veteran, like, recognition contests. But, also, we're going to have some resources as well for our veterans from twelve to three. So, it'll be an opportunity to celebrate them, connect with them, but also provide resources for them in the community. And lastly, this is something really early, but we wanted to put this on everyone's radar. But, we are working to bring back the Haunted Torch Walk on October 21st. So, our department, along with the police department, will be hosting this event. And we're really excited to bring this back. I think there's been a lot of positive chatter around the town. A lot of our staff are excited about it. But, we do need volunteers heavily for this event. So, if anyone would like to volunteer, if you know of any volunteers, please reach out to us at the Parks and Rec Department and we would definitely, you know, take any volunteers. And we do need some local businesses to host some of the haunted scenes that go into this event. So, for any of you that have been through it before, we have various people that will host like haunted scenes within the walk. So, if anyone knows of any businesses as well that would like to contribute and be a part of this event, we'd love to collaborate. And as always, we love to see you all at our events and to attend them and we appreciate that. And that is all I have.
Great job. You're doing a fantastic job. Where you've brought Fourth R from where it was when you got here is just amazing. And thank you for all the hard work that you and your staff are doing. Any questions for Molly?
I just have a quick question. Is the new building open for community, like, organization meetings? For example, Girl Scout meetings or the like?
Unfortunately, no. At this time, we are not open to any meetings. We're going to evaluate what we can do in the fall. However, it'll be very limited compared to what we're used to.
Could you tell us how you're doing revenue generation-wise with all these programs, VMP and Fourth R? Are we doing okay?
Yes, so we've actually been able to healthily recoup some of our fund that we were depleting rapidly during COVID. Next meeting, I can give an accurate number of where we're at. But, we are looking in a much better position than we were at the last fiscal year. And that's really truly because our department has focused on, you know, being financially responsible. We're trying to get more sponsorships, trying to cost-share some of our program supplies and equipment. And we're just really trying to focus on providing that, you know, high-quality programs and not making unnecessary purchases.
Thank you. And for the commissioners, I just want you to know that at the farmer's market, James, Genevieve, and I were there. And it was nice. It was good. It was good to be there. So, I'd encourage you to get involved with anything you can.
And I know John has his piece as well.
Right, but the community, they're willing to talk to us. Didn't you find that?
Oh, absolutely. I think that they're very much interested in hearing from us and want to tell us what they're interested in as well. And I think that was the most interesting part is hearing from the community about, you know, they're not shy about telling us what they want. So, that was good to hear.
Thank you. Sean?
Good evening. I'm going to leave a couple of the big ones for last, but the crew's been working. They got the memorial, VMP, all ready for the Memorial Day Parade, which was a big success. They've been working on the Buckland Islands and all the plantings. They remulched everything. And we finally got the irrigation that's been abandoned for almost ten years now up and running. So, that's working. We've been overseeding a lot of the athletic properties early in May. Lacrosse just had a tournament at Ry Street. That was a big success. The crew went and switched it from soccer to lacrosse for the weekend and now they're going to go, I believe they did it yesterday, and switched it back from lacrosse back to soccer again. So, because they have another week and then state tournaments, I believe, are the last, are the Saturday or Sunday for soccer. We've taken care of a bunch of planting beds in town. We finally got another, our groundskeeper is up and running. His name is Jeff and he's done a wonderful job for us so far. Now, we're going to talk about the splash pad briefly. Everything came in, finally, the embeds that the contractor's been waiting for on May 28th. The problem that we have now is that the contractor had another job that he was working on because it took so long to get the embeds in, which are all the plumbing that goes beneath the concrete. Because that took so long, he's had another job now and he's got to wrap that job up. So, now, we're at the mercy of him. So, we think and we're hoping that he's going to be start and possibly breaking ground by this Friday. So, that's moving a little slower than we certainly wanted. Most of the problem was, like I said, getting the embeds here and the cabinet that they were waiting for. They're on back order. Then, there was a shipping issue with it and we heard every excuse known to man. But, I think we're finally getting somewhere. We have some log benches that are ordered for the splash pad that should be here shortly. We just went and looked at some different style Adirondack chairs because not all of us can get out of a real low Adirondack chair easily. So, we have some Adirondack chairs that'll sit around it and some taller ones that will sit around it. The shade structures that we have specked out have all been ordered. And we're hoping that should be here well before the completion of the splash pad. But, hopefully, if everything goes well, we're going to see some dirt moving by the end of this week. Another thing is Old Orchard Hill. We'll call it New Recreation. The crew's done a mountain of work there. And like Molly said, Clay and Building Maintenance in their department has also done a lot. Street Services has helped us with, one of the things you don't think about is we had to move everything from Wapping over to Orchard Hill. We got a quote from a moving company that was astronomical, so the crews did all that in-house. We've not just painted, we've done some plumbing work over there. We've done some other works throughout the building, landscaping, benches, move things around inside the building, bring things, even like the, I'll get it. What's the band? The Community Chorus Band? We had to move all their file cabinets upstairs. We actually rented this thing to bring the file cabinets upstairs. It climbs the stairs. That didn't work at all, so we just muscled them up with the crew. Things that you don't really think about is like when Molly says air conditioners, it's not that simple. We're running a year-round program there. We have to cut windows apart, take really long, tall windows and make them half-windows. And we're not allowed to run an extension cord around the corner of the building like was done with the other air conditioners. So, we have to run power from, from the, actually, the portables have the best, the largest service available. So, all our power is coming from the portables back to all the rooms through the ceilings and through the top. You talk about bathrooms. It's kind of funny, but I'm not used to an elementary school and you go in the bathroom and you're standing at the stall and the door only comes to here on me and I'm not that tall. But, luckily, the bathrooms, you know, there's room for eight or ten kids in each bathroom. We have run camp before there in the past. As far as the outside of New Recreation, we've made some big improvements there. A couple of trees that were hazardous came down. Well, they weren't really hazardous, but they were seriously in decline. Those have come down. Over by where the original playground is, is where we're going to bring the smaller children. We're making them their own playground over there. There was a couple of rickety, crooked gates that were along the roadway. Those two gates are going to get moved. Well, we're getting new gates. They're going to go down a little further. That fence that runs along Gray Road or Arnold Way, whichever, I think it's Arnold Way that goes down there, is going to get replaced. The fabric, we're going to straighten the fence out. We'll continue, because people that live in the neighborhood want to use that playground still, we're still going to have a gate that goes from that roadway into the playground. But, we also are going to have a fence that comes in and it makes that whole section to the right of the building and in between the road, a whole playground for the kids. The original playground that we looked at was about fifty by fifty. This one's about ninety-five by forty-five, so it's much larger. It has a very good-sized substantial tree off to one side of it, so it gives the kids some nice shade. And I think it'll work out really well. We put new certified playground mulch at the, all the playgrounds that are there. We did remove an old shed that was there also. We've done some other extensive renovations. But, the school's going to be a challenge. It was a, it was a, it was a school. And now, it's going to be a year-round try and, you know, we need a new home. That's all there is to it. And I think one of the bigger challenges that you're going to see when this opens up is parking. Orchard Hill has enough parking spots for fifty people. We have that in staff. The staff's going to have to park over at TE behind the tennis courts and walk to the, and walk to the school or walk to New Recreation to do it. And when you're going to try and drop off or queue three hundred kids, we don't even know how we're going to do it. I mean, we know how we're going to try and do it, but it's going to be, it's going to be a task. And I'm sure Molly's team will do a great job with it. We're going to have people outside. They're going to have, but it, the only thing is, I'm going to say is, park wherever you want. There, there's going to be no rules in parking, I don't think.
Well, we have a parking plan in place.
Okay, it's going to be, you're going to be parking on the lawn. You're going to be parking in the parking lot because it's going to be like, it's like when I go by Phillips Smith School or Pleasant Valley, there's just, there's not enough room for when they have events and they got to park on the lawn. And that's what we're going to have to do with Orchard Hill. The crew has done a great job. Molly's team has done a great job. The school looks a million times better than it did. And we are very proud of what they have done so far and the other departments.
Yes, Toby, Genevieve, and I went toward with Molly, I think, last month, right as you guys finished. You guys did a great job. You made that facility look as great as it can be. It's a seventy-year-old building. That's full stop.
Well, we've actually done quite a bit in the last, I'm going to say, week and a half. So, it's, it's a big change from what you've seen even already. And like I said, it's going to be, it's a challenge. And I think everybody will realize that as they visit there or as they participate there. And I think everybody will realize that as they visit there or as they participate there. I happen to have grandchildren that are going to be going into the school system that use the before, the, what's it called? Before, pre-K or whatever it is. I always get in trouble because I call it the wrong thing and I don't want to get Shelby mad at me. But my grandchildren use the preschool. I have another one that's going to use it. I say thank you to all the teachers. They did a great job. But, but, you know, Orchard Hill will be a challenge. But we were, we're up to that challenge and I think that the people are what's going to make the facility, not the facility.
And I do, again, I want to echo that we are very thankful that our crew is very dedicated and positive and willing to put in that work to make sure that it's functioning. And they've done a fantastic job. And the other departments without their help and their assistance. I know that we are a pain to them right now, you know? I'm constantly calling and emailing just because we find out new things that we did not know that we, you know, needed and they have been very flexible. We're constantly having IT people walking around, Building Maintenance people. And they've all been very useful and helpful and we do appreciate that because I know that they have the whole town to work on and they've had to make it a priority to be in our building. And we know it's a lot, so we are grateful for them to come through and do all that work. And it is going to be a challenge to navigate. And I think at the end of the day, the kids are going to have a great experience no matter what because our staff are so awesome. And that hopefully those parents or caregivers, you know, they see that we're doing a great job, but they also want to see better for the space essentially.
Yeah, could you also, though you can offer, what you're going to offer is great, but you also can't offer things.
Right, right. So I think that that's the big piece, right? So, and I put this out in my director's message, it'll be in the Fall brochure as well, that we have made improvements to the space. However, you know, we don't have the ability to expand the space due to obviously various hurdles like the ADA portion and the fact that it is an old building. And we also don't have the funding, right, to knock down walls and just start building out. So we are truly at capacity. And as Erica had said, the strategic planning had popped up saying, well, they want Recreation to provide all these healthy and active things for our community. And we want to. I mean, we have such a staff team that's always like, hey, we want to do this. We want to do that. And we hear that people want us to do these things and we'd be happy to. I think we just, again, need the space and need that funds to make it work. And that's the reality. And we truly hope that people understand that we are putting our best foot forward and we're trying to make it work, but we can only do so much with what we're given.
And then, and one of the bigger challenges that we face as the Parks Department is because we're putting so much effort into Orchard, into New Recreation, it affects what we do in the parks and in the grounds and in our regular maintenance and our daily stuff that we try and do. I mean, we still have to mow all the grass. We still have to do all the plantings, all the shrubs and all the other works and prep baseball fields every day and line paint every week. And, you know, and I just, again, we have an absolutely fantastic crew that just keeps giving. And, but it's going to get to the point where we're going to push too hard and things could fall down. And right now, we're, the plate's full. We can't put any more, anything else on the plate. But the last thing we are working on is we did build a permanent structure over at the farmer's market. We put a concrete pad in there. The tent that was there is basically, it's called an event tent. It's really only designed to be up for a few days at most. The gazebo that we built is not near as big. It's 14 by 20. But it will house some picnic tables underneath it. And it's a very nice little structure and the guys are building that right now. So if you want to take a look at that, it should be done by the farmer's market by Saturday. And we have the Showmobile, I think, and a band, so come out and spend some money and have fun.
Any other questions? Do you have anything to go?
Just have one thing. John, I just want to recognize the gentleman who was planting the flowers last Saturday at the Nevers Road Park. He did a fantastic job. They look awesome.
Most likely that's probably Jeff, our new groundskeeper.
Yeah, he said he was there like only three weeks. You're letting him drive the vehicle and he was very happy.
Jeff Small and she's doing a great job.
Thank you. Molly, do you have anything to report from the subcommittee?
Yeah, I mean, I can kind of talk. So for the subcommittee meeting, we're kind of focusing on how are we going to hear from the community, engage with the community in order to further the facility, getting a new Parks and Rec facility. So I don't have specific notes from that meeting. I have notes on just about everything else. But from that meeting, if I recall correctly, it was mostly discussion about community engagement, when and where we were going to be in the community, speaking to people, and how are we going to gather that data? We talked, we've been talking about a survey. Do you remember if we had any specifics on the survey at that meeting?
No, but I, what I was going to mention is Toby, Genevieve and I were at the farmer's market, meeting with folks at the first one. And, you know, there was really, it was an awareness building event. And I think what we learned is that there was absolutely no awareness of the fact that the building and the facility is where it is, so.
Even from people who are engaged with Parks and Rec?
Right, right. It was to a person. I don't think, I think I heard of one person simply because there was maybe a preschool program that they knew about, but everybody else had no idea. So my suggestion would be, and I'd open it to the floor for the commission to discuss, would be to consider taking a more formal action. There's things that would need to be done in order to move forward with a real facilities plan. And those things would involve fundraising and other things that, I'm not sure we as the commission can do, but we may be able to ask the questions to help facilitate those discussions in the community. So my suggestion would be that we maybe move to that phase if people are interested in doing that. I think Genevieve and I spoke, thought perhaps you, Toby, might want to be involved in that effort to try to move things to a more formal way. So I'll, I'll stop and open it up. But we thought that it might be the right time to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, I think just as in continued community engagement, I was able to join Molly and John at the senior center where we spoke with a couple of residents about, you know, what they're using for programming, what they would use if we had a new facility. And I think we talked about the potential to maybe host dessert after maybe one of their lunches to try and get more interaction. And then we also attempted to have a coffee with Parks and Rec one morning and unfortunately did not have a great turnout or any turnout. So Molly and I were able to kind of go more in-depth in the constraints of the building and, you know, what some of that, the vision is, I guess. And then I was able to speak with the staff, with Shawna and Jordan. And is it Nate? Nate who does aquatics? So I've been able to have some discussions with them about their programming. And I just want to, we've kind of touched on it in different parts, but some of the programming that is being affected or that they're concerned about because of the building, that is, that includes the dodgeball tournament they had to move to the high school. The Grinchmas event that we do yearly is being adapted. And that's because the front door is not, it, the front door is not ADA accessible or it's not ADA accessible to be able to get to the lower part of the building, right? I believe the family dance is most likely not going to be able to happen this year. And that is a pretty beloved activity in town. Sports programs are losing at least two nights of gym time. There's less open space for, less open gym space. They're concerned about space for badminton. And I think Jordan is really concerned. There's no room for rescheduling. So everything is so packed that if anything needs to be rescheduled, it's going to get pushed to the back of the line essentially. So I just wanted to highlight some of those concerns from the staff. And I agree with Jamie that I feel like we need to move on to a more formal push to get this facility project moving. I kind of went over some of the minutes from the previous, there was a task force, a committee tasked by the town council to look into a facility plan. Their last meeting was in November, from what I can see online. And I think they kind of landed on Old Orchard Hill, New Recreation is the temporary space. But I don't know, I, I don't see what the next step is or what has been planned. And I, I just think that we keep saying we need a building, but who's going to do that? And how and when? And, because it's not happening right now. So I think we need to be the ones to be pushing this.
So what we need is, from what I hear from both of you, is we need to develop a plan. And we need to start to implement it. So I'm thinking, again, just spitballing in here with y'all is, can we see if, I think this would be an interesting, newsworthy report for the JY to come in and look at the Whopping and ask questions and look at things and take pictures. Has anyone tried that approach?
To kind of publicize the facility that we're working with?
I mean, you call up and say, hey, did you hear what they're doing in South Windsor with the school, the new Parks and Rec? And you can peek the, what's that? No, is it something not allowed? Keep me on the straight and narrow, Erica.
No, I just, I, my concern with that is that we're trying to throw Parks and Rec under the bus.
No.
By doing that and shedding a negative light in that aspect.
I should highlight what they've been doing with what they have.
And it's probably, I, I don't think Molly can take that on because I think that might be a conflict with her job.
But Toby, what I hear you suggesting is you, you're, you think there's even more awareness that needs to be brought.
We're trying to get public knowledge. We're trying to get out there.
Well, yeah, and I'm thinking even smaller than that, which is, I'm thinking within the town and the town government structure and the departments. I'm not sure that there's as much awareness about what's going on, the difficulties, because it's happening in real time. So one option would be to sort of have more internal discussions, let folks know that there may be additional things that need to happen. We may need to talk with the town manager. We may need to consult with the town attorney to formalize those things. I'm not suggesting we can make any actions or make any decisions now. I'm just saying that we, we might want to be in a more fact-finding mode.
Well, one sense, the two of you are like a sense of urgency, but then you're like, well, wait a second. Put on the brakes here. So I, I hear you. So maybe we could have an, an open house event for, for in-house people in town and we spend a little money, we have an event, they attend the event, we give them a tour, we give them a talk, let them see for themselves the pluses and the minuses.
So, yeah, I was going to suggest as well that we can host a tour for commission, for the town council, for everyone to see the facility. We can do that first as well to host that and then also do an open house, a twofold there. I think that would be good just to raise a little bit more awareness because no one has really had the ability to come into the facility yet. I mean, it's open to the public, so anyone can walk in, right? However, we haven't like really invited everyone in yet, so.
They just had a reason, a compelling reason to go.
Right, so, but I, you know, we just wanted to make sure that everything was done prior to camp and that was our main focus before we invited everyone in. However, we, you know, we would be very open to hosting a commission tour, a town council tour to show the facility and then also do an open house. Similar to Whopping, they did an open house, but it was a little different back then.
And at the end of summer, is there any kind of awards banquet for the camp and stuff like that?
Yes.
So that can be a community event where we can do the same thing. What do you guys think? The quiet side of the table.
Smiles.
Do we want to have a formal way of collecting data at these events? Do we want to put together a formal survey? Whether it is five questions or, God forbid, 25 questions? Like, I don't know that we need a huge formal survey, but I don't know. There is some value to having data being collected while we are doing this engagement and this awareness.
Well, if we're at the facility, a good question would be simple questions like, what do you think of what you see? You know, do you think this is good enough? Do you think this is applicable to what, you know, simple questions.
Certainly, yes.
Right, right. I, I don't think we want a temperature div, a little bit more, a little bit less, but do you see that this needs to grow? Because what would, the reality we have in the town is we are growing whether we like it or not. So to say you don't want to grow more is kind of working against us because we are growing regardless.
Sure.
And I, Toby, I think your idea of an open house and engaging folks is a great idea because when we were at the farmer's market, what most, frankly, we had a number of people volunteer right off the bat, which I was frankly shocked at, that they were, yeah, I'm willing to pitch in and actually help out. You know, I'm doing pickleball and I want more indoor pickleball. So, yeah, I'd love a facility, so I think it's a great idea.
I did collect 20 individual names and email addresses to start off our efforts in our database of supporters. So I think collecting that is important. I think, again, collecting some data is going to be important. But adjacent to the awareness is what are we sell, what are we selling? What are, what are we saying? You know, we, we want them to come into New Recreation and realize that it's, it's not going to give us what the town, what we believe the town really wants, needs, deserves. But we need to have a facility plan. And I know that the committee that was tasked by the town council, they worked with Colliers a bit and had a couple of options. One being, I'm trying to remember what I had. There was one at Nevers Park, which I don't think is going to be a popular one. We've seen that with the Fields referendum. One was the Priest property, which is a great parcel of land. There are some issues there. And then one was utilizing older, New Recreation, the, that parcel of land in building a new building, which location-wise, great, but again, issues with the size of the land. So I guess, I don't know, Toby, do you have thoughts on how that is supposed to move forward? How is, how those decisions are supposed to be made? We know it's, you know, we're going to require a referendum to get this approved by the town. But I feel like we do need to have something to sell.
And I think too, if I can interject for a second, Genevieve. And Erica, you have the hard copy of the strategic plan as well. I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull up my copy here as well. But I know in the strategic plan, there was some, there was something put in there as well as far as restarting that process with that, with that new, you know, commission to find a permanent home. And then there were some dates as well that were assigned to it, granted a couple of years down the line. But, but there was a measure, or a measure put in there in the plan.
Do you want me to share that information?
Yeah, I can bring mine up.
It's priority one, quality of life of residents. It's objective A, provide recreational options that support active lifestyles for all residents. The second bullet point reads, develop a plan to provide the Parks and Recreation Department with a permanent home. Measure, committee formed by November 2023. Committee report to council by July 2025.
So what do you say that we have a goal to present to the town council, a sub-plan of what we have to offer or what we're selling, as you say, for this subcommittee to start with as their platform to begin what they're doing?
So, sorry, you want to have a plan to give this subcommittee?
Right.
So they're going to be starting up November 2023?
Right.
Is what I'm hearing. And they're hoping to be wrapped up by, formed by November 2023. Okay. And they, they are to have a resolution by 2025?
July.
July, okay.
So that's the standard, the committees, whoever wrote the report, that was the standard they set in the timeline that they drew up. I just want to understand that. It's based on the goals for the town? I just want, that was, just want to understand what that was. Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we have to follow that exact timeline though, right? So if we end up doing, yeah, so I'm sure if we were a little advantageous and wanted to get going and figure that thing out, right? And we can get a resolution prior to July of 2025, that would be fantastic. That'd be even better, right? And we can get a resolution prior to July of twenty twenty-five, that would be fantastic, that'd be even better, right?
Yeah.
That was my point, it's one group's view of how to try to get something accomplished.
Of course, yep.
There's many other opportunities to try to figure out how to do that, but that's, yeah.
Yeah, but I was just saying, thinking that it's, it's something that's, that at least it's been put in the radar of, you know, the strategic plan so that it doesn't fall between the cracks and then, you know, a year down the line, we're not having the same conversation of, you know, we should form a committee.
Okay.
The, my question was, if they're trying to have a resolution by July twenty twenty-five, that would probably put like a potential building like in twenty twenty-seven, like you could tell us, is this a suitable replacement for the next four to five years? Or is there gonna need to be a solution before that?
Ideally, there'd be a solution before that, but, uh, you know, I, I know that it takes time to get a quality referendum out as well, right? So in order to get a quality referendum in case behind why we need a new facility, it probably unfortunately is gonna take that time. Um, we would love in a perfect world for everyone to vote yes within, like, you know what I mean? Within a year, everyone's like gung ho behind us, cause we know that we have a lot of love and support for the department.
And if there's any supporters in town who are listening, who would be interested in supporting facility, please reach out to Molly or anybody at the Parks and Rec Commission.
That'd be great.
I'd like to come back next month with, with some, if everyone come in with, with a question or two that you'd like to have an answer to ask towards a survey, towards some of these events, a couple ideas, um, cause we can brainstorm all we want right now, but let's come back each of us with some ideas and some thoughts as a homework. And would you please make sure that's on the agenda?
Yes, and I would be happy to come back.
Work session.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to come back with a few dates for tours and open houses as well and we can determine as a group what dates would work best during the meeting.
That would be good. And I would just encourage, just from my experience over the past couple of weeks, I would encourage you all to stop into the new facility because you guys are doing an amazing job with what you have, um, but it's definitely eye-opening to see exactly what you do have and what you have to work with. Um, so thank you guys for everything you're doing.
Yes.
Um, one of the things that I, I think that you need to take advantage of is the amount of people that are gonna be at that building pretty soon. Uh, I think we need to come up with a simple survey with some simple questions, I think we need to have a Q R code that goes along with it and I think we need to brand and push ourselves really hard. Um, and show that, you know, we deserve a new facility, we need a new facility and, and I think that the amount of, whether it's uncles, brothers, cousins, sisters, grandparents dropping off the kids, you know, there's gonna be a lot of feet through that facility pretty soon. And I think the more people that we reach out to and, and try and get surveys filled out and, and answers to things and uh, tours of the building, even if we do more than one tour, even if we have to do multiple open houses to, to show what we have and what we're dealing with. I think we need to take advantage of as much as we can and push as hard as we can and I also think we should give Dr. Carter a call and ask her some, for some helpful hints.
So I have had some conversations with people that were very close to the school, referendum committees and projects, um, and so yeah, I think they are a very good resource, um, but one of the things that I took away from the community engagement was trying to meet people where they are at. Um, and like we talked about maybe hosting, uh, one of the lunches or desserts at the senior center to, cause that is where the, that is where the seniors like to gather. Um, but like you said, the, um, the facility, people are going to be gathering there for camps, for programs. Um, and if we can host, uh, you know, have donuts on your, you know, drop your kids off, come grab a donut in a survey and talk to us in the morning, um, at camp a couple of times this summer, I think that would be great because that is where parents are going to be. I don't know how quickly we can get a survey put together, I know we've, we've been talking about a survey a lot. Um, and I don't know that we're gonna make the cutoff, that's what I, I meant to ask you, for the, the cutoff date for the catalog? Oh, it's done?
We already put in our first draft for the fall. Uh, so unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to put a survey out to the public via the catalog until the spring. Uh, we have other avenues for mass generating emails, uh, to our database, which has like eleven thousand individual emails. But the catalog, we could certainly start a survey and have it out prior to that, but then we would still have to extend it through the spring when it goes back into the mailboxes in April.
So these are all wonderful ideas, but they, it's gonna take a lot of resources, you know, because you, in order to have people to, you have to have someone available to ask questions and write, write down the answers or to give them the answers or, or to, to walk them through that and clearly, most everyone I know here is, uh, working all the time. It's hard to get time to, to go to these, I'd love to attend all these events, but they're always on workdays, Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Um, Toby, just so you know, we, we talked about making it easier for data collection, so when we do the farmer's market and I think the other community events, they're gonna bring iPads if they're available to try to do the surveys so we can capture all that data in real time and just feed it in, so that's.
Did, did, so you guys got all the forms that they filled out? I didn't fill out any because I.
I've compiled, I've, I compiled everything into a spreadsheet, so I have about twenty names and emails from the farmer's market.
Okay.
And so I hope to continue adding to that. Um, and I, I definitely understand, you know, I, I work full-time also. Um, I'm just lucky to have a little bit more flexibility during some of my days, um, but there are a lot of programs, there's the concerts in the evenings, there's the farmer's market. We can certainly go more than once. Um, I think there are a lot of opportunities we can take advantage of and should if we want to reach as many people as we can and we also spoke to a lot of people who were willing to volunteer, so I think there are more resources, there are more people who would join forces with us. Yep, I have a couple, I have a couple people noted, um, and then a couple people that were recommended to me, that were involved with the schools, that might be good resources and willing to be involved as well, so I think, yes, we definitely need resources, we need people, but I think.
We need structure, we need structure, at certain level, we'll need structure organizationally, you'll need a like commit, you know, real committees, steering committees and like treat it as a real project eventually, okay? But obviously, right now, we're, we're in the awareness building and like, this is the reality's part of it, so I think that's a good plan for now.
Good, we see, so we had that on the agenda and, and we have some homework for next month. John, is there anything else? Any other business for the commission? We've entertained a motion.
Second.
It's been a motion adjourned second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.